Any changes to the agenda?
Nope.
We will move on to the oath of office for new school board members. This evening, we have three new members that are joining us. Well, one that's coming back and two new ones. Will you introduce yourself a little bit, please?
Sure, my name is David Delitzin.
I'm Laura Idom.
And Ronnie Tang.
And we had two, three members that had gone off. And so then these three were elected in November. And so then tonight is their first meeting. All right, and welcome aboard. We will move on to public comments. And I, you know, got emails from like most of you. And thank you for your interest in that. That was exciting to hear. I wanted to hear some more. So this is our middle school students.
And you want to turn around, we do have a presentation. If you want to just turn around and say, we'll talk as loud as we can.
Oh, oh, can I pause here? I totally am out of order myself. I need to do the elected election of the chairperson for the 2019 school year. Is there a motion?
I'd like to nominate Sandy Hawk.
Is there any other nominations? Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ryan. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now, we will adopt the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Ronnie? Any questions? If there are no questions, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. No, sorry, Carrie.
That's okay. So if you wish to turn around and view what's going on here, the kids will be over here sneaking. I figured that was the best. So, and to me, I already know this last June, I was on expedition to the Arctic as a grown-up teacher fellow with National Geographic. And the learning that occurred is way too enormous to recount with you here today. But I want to let you know that I personally experienced firsthand and saw two important issues facing the climate. First is that the ice is gone. Structures are sliding into the bay. This is Atacatearmi Greenland. This is a church that they no longer use because the foundation is crumbling in this location. There was also water where there's typically still ice. You can see the ship in the background. That bay is usually frozen through August. We were there in mid-June. Faster cabin glaciers were all around us. We were in our Zodiacs. This glacier again in the Atacatearmi Greenland, it caved three times. And that's breaking off of ice in 30 minutes while we were there. So we had to outrun some waves there. But the ice is disappearing. Climate change is real. The second takeaway was in a place that should be plastic-free, there's plastic everywhere. It's then that I began to ask myself, how can I empower DGF students to do something about this plastic pollution problem? And I came up with three ideas. First, I shared adventure from my Arctic expedition. Well, I probably showed way too many polar air holes. Second, we learned how the animals and humans are being affected by the plastics that I saw everywhere. And third, through project-based learning design and National Geographic's National Geographic inquiry model, students began to ask, how can we reduce or eliminate the plastic pollution in our own community? Overall, 30 groups of students ranging anywhere from four to six team members have recently been going out into the community with a research plan on a variety of ways to locally tackle this global plastic problem. Today, you're going to hear from student groups that had a similar call to action. These students were originally in four separate groups across four different class periods. And they've combined their efforts to share with you their geo-inquiry story and to ask you to help us to act locally toward global impact. Here's their story. Skylar?
Mrs. Westgard, you killed this bird. Mrs. Chrisley, you helped kill this bird. I know it's hard to believe. How could our plastic pollution affect this bird that is thousands of miles away from us here in Minnesota? Hannah is going to tell you how this all started.
We started out with field clubbing down on September 18th and covered the school grass and dill. Some people have poured down their overnight screen. We were not observing one to three. We geotagged and photographed plastic that we found. We discovered a lot of plastic in just one day and there's still more plastic that we didn't find. This natural sort of location of our plastic that we found over six classrooms. In total, there were 613 pieces of plastic that we geotagged and photographed. Here's Natalie's quick overview.
Lately, in our geo-overlook class, we've been learning about plastic and how it affects the environment. Our group is specifically working on starting some used plastic recycling at the school. This is important to the environment because it will help save lives, both animals and people. We have an idea on how we can start similar used plastic recycling. Chase is going to explain what all this plastic does.
Plastic takes up a vast amount of resources to make. And some of those resources are toxic chemicals. Over time, the plastic, a lot of those toxic chemicals moves out of the plastic. Plus, as a bonus, plastic attracts other toxic chemicals that will attach to the plastic. These toxins are also harmful to organic life. Plastic can take up to 1,000 years to degrade. That's 12.5 times the average life expectancy for a normal human's lifetime. There are many major contributors to the problem we have today. First is the plastic industry. And it's harder to use than making of plastic because people do not want to lose their jobs. Plastic is a massive industry, so they have money to get people like politicians on their side to think that plastic is good and recycling is not necessary. So forget about plastic bag rooms. The second problem is that most people know what plastic is, but do not know how bad it is for the environment. Others that do know about the environmental problems, that do know about it, unless they're like our teacher, Mrs. Westgard. Plastic gets to animals, revitalize pollution, but it can get to us. It can get to us in the fish we eat, water we drink, and even the air we breathe. The effects of plastic can lead to birth defects, cancers, and other problems like asthma. Plastic can greatly prolong things for a little while and to make our lives easier. But think about what it really does after you toss it in the garbage or in the ground. DGF schools contribute to this plastic problem. In Delworth, we don't recycle plastic. But because our teacher had us do this project, we have made changes to the school, like recycling the plastic film. And we are in the process of taking, talking with the city council of both Delworth and Glendon. Now, Dagger is going to show you how our plastic ends up in the ocean.
You may think that since we live in the middle of a continent, our plastic doesn't end up in the ocean. We're wrong. This is the map where the plastic takes from DGF to the Arctic Ocean.
Of course, we need permission. Well, if you can all visualize your North American map, you can just go ahead and say the route that it takes.
It can get carried by the wind to the nearby Buffalo or Red River. And then it flows with the currents north to Lake Winnipeg, which is in Manitoba. And then the plastic then meanders around Lake Winnipeg and finds its way to the Nelson River on the northern edge of the lake. Then it goes through the Nelson River onto the Hudson Bay, finally ending up into the Arctic Ocean. After seeing all the plastic around the school and seeing how it ends up in the ocean, we worked on what's called a geo-inquiry project that starts with creating our own geo-inquiry question. Skylar, please.
A geo-inquiry question is an informational question that helps lead to solve a wealth problem. This problem can be a small-town problem like plastic pollution in Delworth or Glendon, or a large state problem like in Minnesota. By solving problems in our small town, we can set an example for other small towns to make their town better. And then the world better. Topic of our research was to create a program to try and eliminate the amount of DGFS plastic that ends up in the ocean, which brought us to our geo-inquiry question. How can we as eighth graders propose a recycling program at DGF Middle School in order to reduce the amount of plastic pollution in the entire region? Now, Keaton is going to tell you why this is important.
Well, we are a group of eighth graders from a small town in Minnesota wanting to make a huge impact in this world. We want to address the worldwide problem of plastic waste. At first, our idea was to include the whole DGF district. Our teams are big, but we need to start small in our very own middle school. The lunchroom seemed the obvious choice to begin our project. Then we expanded to include the entire middle school. We came up with a plan to start a single-service recycling program. First, we collected data to see if there's a problem. Then we looked into how to start a recycling program. We can see the steps of how to start a recycling program here. Right now, we're at step number five, getting your support. As I mentioned earlier, we collected some data and created some graphs and maps. Jagger is going to tell you about the plastic found in the fashion.
We collected a lot of data inside the Delworth Middle School building. This is a graph of plastic collected in the fax, which means Family and Consumer Science Room over a period of two weeks. As you can see, most of the plastic was filmed like bread bags, potato bags, and cereal bags. Did you know that from November through December 2018, we collected and recycled 30 pounds of plastic film from not only the factory, but the entire Delworth site? Here is Natalie with data they found on the second floor of Delworth.
My group created a graph showing the amount of plastic that were in each of the trash cans of the upstairs of Delworth in one day. As you can see, on Tuesday, Ms. Mallard's class had 35 pieces of plastic in her trash, and Ms. Westgard had eight pieces. We also did the elementary school, upstairs elementary school classes on Thursday. This graph shows you the overall pieces of plastic in each trash can upstairs. Also, my group transferred the information from this graph into a map. There are five colors to represent the plastic map in each class. The darkest is thirty to forty, then it's thirty to twenty, then twenty to ten, then ten to five, and lastly, five to zero pieces. The gray spaces on the map are the storage rooms, bathrooms, mechanical rooms, and topside multipurpose room and middle school gym. Last is the fax room that we colored dark gray because another group was doing it. Carson and Walter are going to show you what they found on the first floor.
All right, so this is a bar graph showing by room how much plastic we found. And this bar graph involves one middle school classroom, 15 elementary classrooms, the media center, offices, and the middle school lobby. And as you can see, the place with the most plastic was the middle school lobby. Carson is going to tell you about our map of first floor.
All right, this is the map on how many plastics were in the rooms on the first floor over two days. The darker the color of the room means more plastic found in the garbage can that day. When you look at the left side, it shows white for zero up to black for more than 21 pieces of plastic. There are two rooms where the room is black, and that is the lobby area. Where the, ah, the lobby. The area where the middle schoolers go before they get on the bus. The rest of the map shows that the garbage has had anywhere from one to two pieces of plastic. The classroom, though, with the most plastic, had six in the rooms that day. This is the data from just one lunch day at the middle school cafeteria. According to food services, there were 612 lunches served at lunch that day. There were a total of 1,892 pieces of plastic that ended up in the garbage. Most of it came from the use of sporks, ranch packets, and plastic dipping cups. And here's Lexie.
Okay, so we want to start a recycling program in the middle school. And we've been looking at the single hauler system. The custodial will collect the plastic from the bins in the school with the tin cans that they already collect and bring it over to the recycling center. We've investigated ways to start a recycling program, and we came up with the Pepsi Recycle Rally. The Pepsi Recycle Rally is a program that we are looking into because they offer many incentives as well as ways to educate students about recycling. You will see more information in the handout and then you can hand it out. Here is where we are looking to put the recycling bins at the Delworth site. So on the first floor, we are looking at five-door bond, the elementary lobby kind of area. We're looking in the multipurpose bin in the kitchen. We're looking in the eighth grade, we're all in the lobby, by door six, and the big jigs. We want to put these there because they are high-traffic areas that have a lot of plastic. On the second floor, we are looking at putting it in the middle school office in the fax room because there are more, they are more high-traffic areas. And here is Skylar with our call to action.
We understand having corporate branding in the school is sometimes controversial. But based off our research, Pepsi Recycle Rally is the best fit because it is no cost. There's free incentive prizes for recycling. It is educational for student staff members and everyone involved, and there's free promotional materials. So our question to you is, based off of the information we provide to you today from the worldwide plastic problem, how DGF contributes to the problem and our research solution, will you please consider allowing us to start the Pepsi Recycle Rally in Delworth? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. So back in, when was it, November, October?
When we started this?
Yes.
In the September?
Okay, and I had received several emails from the students. And then I had given Brian a heads up that this is pretty interesting stuff, that we needed to bring this. And so I thank you for coming here tonight.
Well, I think we need to give Mrs. Westgard the example. She has totally navigated and brought back some learning from the summer. And these kids are so empowered and engaged, it's amazing. I had kids knocking on my door, asking me about plastic pencils to plastic baits. And Mrs. Westgard, who did what, we all engaged and we empowered some.
So now, the day that you guys went around and counted all of those, did people know that you were going into their rooms? Like, did they hide some plastic so they weren't?
One classroom did, actually.
Okay.
Yeah, they had like a collection.
Yeah, they had a collection. She said she was bringing it back, actually, like recycling it.
Oh, okay, okay. So she was already aware of that and going to do something about that?
Yeah, I think people are really open to it. It's just they're raising awareness, making us think about it.
Absolutely.
You know, we talk about allowing kids to have water bottles in the school. Well, we have to balance that with what they're trying to accomplish. So we're trying, we're trying to balance that.
I love the idea. Yeah, definitely do. Does anybody have any questions?
Can the Pepsi one give us a vaccine as to which numbered plastics you can recycle? Because I know there are a couple that you can't recycle.
Right, one of the things that a lot of what you can recycle depends on the recycling center. The Delworth Recycling Center right now accepts all of them, except there's a few weird numbers. Like, if it's a five, it has to be a bottled five. Right now, I'm shooting for ones and twos, which is your typical like water bottles, things like that. The other thing, the height item in the lunchroom are the dipping cups or the juice cups. Those, I don't know if Delworth would consider is a five bottle because it's kind of a bottle shape. But those are number fives. So it would be following up with the city to see what they would take.
I have just a quick question. With this program, you know, it's wonderful to have steps in place for the recycling. But in this program, is it, does it entail other resources you can use other than plastic? Like, do they have something in their program where you are starting to maybe avoid using plastic altogether?
Right, going to the very, it's reduce, reuse, recycle. Ideally, you want to reduce your use of plastics. That would, in order to do that, I think the highest impact in our district is food services. And that's also, that's a convenience and a cost in the east. So then, if we can't reduce our use of having juice cups, there's, this gets kind of sticky, too. Like, the ketchup packets versus we used to have pumps. So whatever decisions were made there, we can talk about that later. But as far as getting, going backwards, yes, there's educational materials for that. But most of the recycle rally is to collect the plastic and keep it out of the garbage and the leftovers.
Your emails were talking about getting rid of the plastic utensils in the lunchroom. Some of you have brought that up. Is that something that you're?
Yeah, there's another group of kids that they are looking at the recycling and the things. We are formulating, getting, pulling together our presentation, and we call them the Spork Group. So be looking forward, hopefully, there will be a presentation. That we just need to determine who the audience is going to be and then go over there.
So, a couple of questions. Have any discussions taken place with food service personnel and also operations?
Operations, as far as the delivery of the recyclables, yes. I talked with James Middleton and I also talked with Tammy Gaisman, I believe it is. And what the plan is in Delworth would be that janitorial, custodial would take over and collect the plastics in these high-traffic areas and place them. Right now, they're collecting the tin cans and already going to recycling center. They would just add the plastic to that. So James Middleton is aware of that. He's been approached, and so has Tammy, as far as that is concerned.
So it sounds like before we, you know, move on, the other, the other factor will be food service. And then this may be one of those, one of those topics, may even be nice in a presentation at an operations committee meeting. Because at the very least, it would be, we're going to need to find out, okay, how much of the plastics in food service are associated with commodities? Are there other options? And we won't know that until we have those conversations. But I, I mean, to me, this is just an absolute fan. What you're doing is you're putting, you are using project-based learning at its best because you're taking that information, you're providing objective data for the schools to work with. And, you know, so kudos to the, to the group. I mean, you're, this fantastic data that you've accumulated. So, very, very good. And I think it's, it's an easy topic for us to add to operations. Let's take it to the next steps and, and get some recommendations so that once we have an operations reps from the board, then that can go right over to an operations meeting. And then get some recommendations from operations, bring that to the full board. Does that sound?
Thank you, guys, for your time. And Carrie, thank you very much.
Awesome. Love it, love it. People wonder or ask questions, what is BBL? Besides demonstrated as fun.
All right, we will move on to 8.1, Board Committee Reports. And we do not have any committee reports. But this is just what the agenda typically will look like. And that would be the time that you'll discuss if you want to implement it. That will be where the time is. So we will move on to 8.2, which is the superintendent report.
So I'm going to give you a handout just so you don't try to take notes on some of these dates. Because there's a few different ones that are coming up. And let's see. First one on my list. And what we do as a leadership cabinet is we sit down as a cabinet and we put together the agenda for these workshop days and keep it on a shared drive. And principals just, I probably stand three minutes myself of work on this. I mean, this is completely the, the admin cabinet is taking this thing over. They figure out what's the best setup for the day. So basically, there's tabs, and I just printed off one of the tabs. This is on this one shared document, each of whether it be the elementarys, middle school, the high school, special ed, paraprofessionals, they all have tabs for what are going to be for their personnel. And then they share it with all of their people. So the admin team just makes the plan for the whole day. This is what's taking place next Monday on the 21st. You'll notice that the first part, this is going to give us the next round of feedback from staff on looking at the bond referendum and a second potential plan. And so the process is, of course, the board is going to get new maps of potential Plan B. And those of you who were down at the, the workshop for Phase One and Two, and if you remember how I was doodling on some different what-ifs, we've been working on this thing since that time. And I, we've been working, meeting with the architects. Jason from Comstock is up to speed, in fact, the architects. And the CM are meeting tomorrow at 3:30 just to put cost estimates into Plan B. And so when you're down in the Twin Cities, we'll have maps of Plan B. It's not saying this takes over, it just says, here's, here's another plan. And here's a potential cost with it in comparison to Plan A. And if the feedback, and so on the 21st, so actually tomorrow, our admin cabinet is meeting, our principals, myself are meeting with the first to fifth grade and sixth through 12th grade leadership teams. And they're going to see the potential maps. Potential plan, we'll disseminate, talk to them, get some early feedback. And then all the board members see it on the 17th. And then the, all staff on Monday morning will get this plan. And what we're looking for is feedback from everybody. Does this look like a viable alternative plan that should be brought back to the task force? To then get their feedback and recommendations. So all of this can be done over the course of a month. So, yeah, it's very good timing that we've delayed a vote until November because we have plenty of time on this yet. Morehead is still in the process of doing their selection of which plan they're going to be doing also. So Brandon and I have been, their superintendent and I have been meeting a number of times trying to coordinate, make sure that we all have the same information at the same time. Especially when we're talking about a career academy. Because Morehead will have board members down in the Twin Cities. You guys will be down there. Part of our goal is run into each other, start having conversations about what do you guys see as priorities? What programming are you planning on? What, what, what do you see as important? I can tell you that after discussing with Brandon, he said their task force, and Terry Quist has been working with their task force, sounds familiar? So Terry's been working with them also. When they looked at what are essential components moving forward, a career academy, they had 33 people, put the lovely little stickers on what's essential. All 33 put that that's essential. So it has unanimous support moving forward. In fact, they're planning, Morehead School Board is, is planning on, on all three of the plan options that they're, that they put out to the public, they are simply attaching X amount of dollars from the career academy to all three. So it's not what if, if DGF and Morehead decide that we want this as a component for all of our kids in the trades, what else not? This is going to happen. So we'll have time. We're looking at putting a joint task force together between the two school districts so that the school boards can meet, the departments can meet, and start planning. Because the curriculum piece will take a couple of years.
I saw that there was a Senate bill that was going to be introduced as far as mandatory.
Yeah, I saw that, very good.
So how does that work as far as like funding? And then is that going to dictate, obviously, what we offer? Can they?
It's a great question for now in MSDA.
Okay.
It's a great question because the commissioner should be there. It's a great question because, um, the commissioner should be there and hopefully the governor will be there.
Okay.
So this is going to be, and, and we've had, um, discussions with, with Paul also so that we can get a bill introduced. Uh, because again, there's, there's, there's been discussions with down at, uh, MDE, um, and with legislators already about looking at fashioning a bill to put in a pilot career academy in the Clay County. So, the timing is really, really good on this. So, as these guys know, um, I disappear for times of the day where it's like, like today, just meeting with the architects and getting updates from them and, and it's, it, it, but it's wonderful because these guys just, you know, as a team administratively now, we just, they just run these buildings and I can work on those district-wide initiatives. So I'm real excited for the discussions down at MSBA when you guys see these maps. I think we are, we're all excited because this, hey, this really seems to have so much more bang for the buck of what we can do. And Sandy's seen a little piece of it. And like I said, the architects, I haven't seen their new drawings and they're gonna have them for me tomorrow at three thirty. So if you, any of you wanna stop in this week before we leave, call me. Get some time tomorrow or Wednesday morning and just give me a call, come in, and we'll put it on the screen in my office. Cause I got all the maps right there. That's what we've been doing. Closing the door and all of a sudden it's a half hour meeting that turned into an hour and a half or two or three hours. You know, but it's been exciting because these guys are getting energized. I mean, we're just, we, goes from one thing and all of a sudden it springs board into something else. Um, I, I think you're gonna, I think it's gonna be a very good alternate plan. And then again, it's just waiting for the money part. They're gonna figure out the money tomorrow and give us ballpark estimates.
I have another question. As far as like the elementary thing, so I see that on the twenty first, you're gonna have breakout sessions. How are you gauging their reaction to what you're gonna be showing them?
After the, after the presentation, we'll be going into our leadership groups. We're gonna do it as a complete elementary.
Okay.
So Dilworth and Glenn together, um, with our leadership team and getting feedback. We've already done, uh, created, I think. Um, to get the feedback of the things that we really like and the things that we want feedback on.
Okay.
And I think it's really important to, you know, for them to know that we did look at what, when we did the professionals development day and we asked for the feedback, we ran with that. We really did. And I think that's gonna be really empowering for us to say, hey, we did look at and we did make some changes and here we go. And it is important to us. So we're prepared, we're ready.
Okay.
We're excited.
Middle school meet as a group and the high school meet something.
Okay.
Just.
High school will be here and then they're in the theater, they're in the commons with all the elementaries together.
Okay.
Break up into small groups, get the feedback, each table then puts their notes together. We accumulate all that. And then we have that ready to provide, uh, to the task force and the school board. We'll put a summary report together on that as far as those recommendations. So it just feels like, you know, when you think about the fact that we've gone from task force meetings to internal dissemination of information in August, take that feedback, take that information, bring them back together in November, take that information, break up into small groups and come up with Plan B based on all the feedback from everybody. So it's been, and we're gonna walk through all that with everybody on the twenty first. It's, it, before they see any of the maps, we wanna review and, and so that people can see, yeah, to really get into this, dig into it because your feedback is absolutely putting this picture and getting it clearer and clearer as we get more information. So, uh, it's, it's really, I think it's really been a, a, a very good process. So this is just one of the example ones and, and every one of the, uh, the, the forms are set to the same length with those breakout sessions and, and unfortunately, we won't have that for the, uh, when we're down in the Twin Cities as a feedback, but we'll have some of the early feedback from the meeting tomorrow with the leadership team.
If we're gonna break back into K two, five, six, twelve after a presentation, then we're gonna process with our group and they'll process with their group and get some of the feedback.
Make sure that with the whole board knows tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
And then the part of the plan down in the cities is, um, and again, you're seeing this on my sheets, but, uh, on the bottom one there, school board and DGF, the work sessions and the leadership cabinet, um, I'm gonna just jump around there a little bit because that is down in the Twin Cities on, on Thursday. Uh, Dan Miller will be there, JLG of course has a booth. And so the sessions, the leadership sessions on Thursday, the last one is three forty-five to four forty-five. So my question for you is, um, because Dan just needs a time, what time do we wanna say? Five o'clock? Do we wanna say five thirty? To meet with him in the lobby at, at the Hilton? Because that's what we'll do. We'll have the handouts and all that, just meet as a group?
It's over at what time?
It's at four forty-five is the end of the last session. So if we said five thirty to give everybody a chance to, or you wanna do it right after?
I'd say it's five fifteen or five o'clock maybe.
Five fifteen, just so you can bring your stuff back to your hotel room, go to the bathroom.
So what all, and what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna shoot a meeting invite just so you have it on your phones as far as the time that we're starting all this stuff. So that'll be at five fifteen.
Yeah.
And then what'll happen is when we get done with that meeting, I'll have reservations set up, um, at the local directly to follow. So if we start that at like five fifteen, if I set up a dinner reservation for like six thirty, and then that way Dan will actually go to dinner with us so that if people want to, you know, have some more follow-up questions and just talk about some of this stuff a little bit. Um, I invited him and he said, he'll, he'll be around for the evening.
Perfect.
So, all right, I'll get that stuff done. Uh, the, okay, you got the clothing, that's done. In case it wasn't gonna be here, I was gonna be getting it tomorrow. Uh, joint powers. So I need to send these registrations in before we leave for the school board conference. If you are going to be able, if you want to go to this, um, let me know, if you can let me know tomorrow, it would be great. Um, even if you wanna come for a half-day session, you notice the morning, um, they, they, we're trying to break this thing up. So there's one topic as a centerpiece in the morning and one in the afternoon. So in the morning, everything is gonna be more about, as you can see, it's mental health. Everything about mental health in the morning, trauma, mental health, keynote speaker, and then panel discussion, children's mental health, community resources. Uh, we were just discussing that because of another presentation that's coming up, that it's too bad that that individual isn't there on, on, at, at this intergovernmental retreat. And then the afternoon, very typical, is workforce. So in the afternoon, we hit workforce. And again, most of the representatives come to this. So what we do is we hit the keynote in the afternoon right after lunch, and then we have the legislative forum and just invite all of them to come in. And that way, people can ask all kinds of questions. And of course, with this one being right early in the legislative session, we couldn't find a better time, especially if we're looking at a career academy and some of that, to get, you know, a little momentum for it. Because we're gonna be, uh, I've already had the discussions with Paul. We already know who can write the bill for us just so that we get the bill on the floor, get that introduced. So all this stuff is coming together over the next two, three weeks to get this in place. So again, if you wanna come with, with, just let me know, shoot me an email or give me a call, a text, whatever, and I'll do registrations tomorrow. Before we ever go.
You sure you don't have to be there right away?
No, you, you can come or, and, and we see this a lot where some may not come for the morning session if the mental health part isn't something that, you know, if they really wanna hold in on, on the workforce piece, then they'll come in in the afternoon. All right, so that's on the power, joint powers. Uh, drug-free community grant. Um, when you get your committee, uh, listings, I know we're not taking action on it tonight, I'll have a handoff for you on that. Uh, this is one of the committees, uh, committees that we will also want to assign, to have a board member on. Um, we have had, we've, as a group, we've had one meeting. Drug-free community grant is through, uh, federal, it's a SAMZ grant. Um, and it's a five-year grant. Uh, we were, uh, approached about whether we want to go for one of these drug-free community grants. Um, it would affect our whole DGF community, not just Dilworth, Glenn, it'll affect all of our kids. All of our kids will get the resources from this. Um, I have been involved in a drug-free community grant before, uh, up at Warren Overeem Losco, we had one. And it's a five-year grant. It's typically for over a hundred thousand a year. I can't remember if this one's one twenty-five a year. Does that sound right? One twenty-five a year for five years. And then if things are going well during those five years, you can get renewed for another five years. And basically what it provides typically is enough funds to be able to have a coordinator that is in working with all of the different, uh, uh, your community, uh, you, you have to have all twelve, there's twelve different sectors that have to be on a coalition for this, including your clergy, including your, the government entities, parents, students, uh, uh, business partnerships, all of these different ones have to be represented to get a federal grant like that. Um, but I've seen it, I've seen it work well, uh, once you have a coalition in place. And what's gonna happen is, I've already created a team drive that we will have, uh, we're setting up a meeting for after the board meeting on the twenty eighth. So to follow the board meeting here, we'll be hosting a meeting. And so the principals and we're, we're working through instant alert and what else not, trying to recruit people. So anybody that you think would be a good person to be on that, make sure that they're aware of it. Because again, we can do the instant alerts, we can put it on our website, but some of it's word of mouth. They can come to the meeting, they don't have to feel like they've committed just because it came to, this is an interest meeting, just to disseminate what it's about. They don't have to worry about trying to write the grant. Uh, the, uh, code, um, was it, can you, is it Sanford, Dakota?
Oh, Dakota Medical.
Dakota Medical Foundation actually will supply a grant writer for this. So they're gonna help us, they're gonna have a grant writer do it. We simply have to identify what are the top substance abuse needs at DGF that we want to be working on. So that is on the twenty eighth here, probably starting about seven o'clock after our board meeting. Uh, officer training workshop, once you get all the officers tonight, and if we have any new ones, you can see the dates, uh, Lakes Country on the sixth or Thief River on the seventh. It's an all-day, uh, conference. Um, then work sessions. We haven't put the work sessions on your calendar yet, but these are the tentative ones with Dr. Hill that are confirmed. So in March, or actually March, or January twentieth at the next meeting, what I'm throwing out for suggestion, um, and Amy, I think you brought it before, especially for the new board members, um, if I can talk all of the, the admin cabinet to come in at five and just be here, and then that way we can talk about roles, responsibilities, and, and you can ask whatever questions you want as far as how's this working together and how do you set your goals and what else not, and we can put right up on the screen. Can people make that at five?
I can.
I'll bring birthday cookies. Seems it's my birthday.
It's the next board meeting.
I know, yours is like the twenty-sixth, isn't it?
I suppose that's something.
Yeah, I think that's great.
Yeah.
Because we don't have. This way we get a one-hour shot on just, here's how, and here's why the different ones are on the admin cabinet, and this is how it all functions together with operations and the birth five and the six to twelve and so on and so forth.
Five o'clock, you said?
Five o'clock.
Yeah, I mean, the dentist will forward, I should be able to make that.
And then March twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth is the next sessions with Dr. Hill. So board work session after the board meeting on the twenty-fifth, then he stays over and he meets with the admin cabinet the next morning. And then May thirteenth, because of he's, uh, Minnewask area and a couple other school districts, we're doing it on the same day. So he'll start out on the thirteenth with the admin cabinet in the afternoon and then meet with the school board on the thirteenth. And then looking to set up at Thumper Pond again, end of the year, so we can talk, here were the goals. Did we accomplish what we thought we were gonna accomplish? And have a retreat, year-ending retreat. That way, uh, as you have feedback from community and what else not, and you want to help, uh, help design and input into some of the goals for the following year, you can do it right in June. And you got the admin team, the cabinet, and the board all there working together on that. And that way, when you get contracts and all those things, you already know where things are at. So start looking at your calendars, we can talk about down in the Twin Cities as far as if there's one of those Thursday, Fridays. And again, what we try to do is, you know, we, we hit Thursday during the day and then Friday morning by noon and get out. So it's any of those Thursday, Fridays that could work with, for the masses. And.
Frank, did you want to?
Yes, Heidi is gonna.
Uh, on the twenty-first, I just wanted to give you an update. We talked earlier about having a baking presentation in service, multiple dates for, um, the community and staff. Today, we had a pre-meeting with, uh, Jason McCoy, who's the tobacco prevention coordinator for, um, Clay County. And, um, it was all the admin team and we, he really rolled up to us what he's going to present to our staff and what he's going to present to, um, certain student groups. On January twenty-first, um, at ten o'clock, we are going to have all staff come. He'll have a show and tell kit where he'll actually show what the different baking devices look like. Um, some of them look like little flash drives, some of them look like, um, little triangle things. He'll, he'll, he'll actually show people what those look like and, and it's, it's called show and tell. And he'll have them available for them to look at closer to. We are having pre-K through twelve come to that. I asked him today what was, uh, youngest age that they've ever got a baking device of a student. He said a kindergartner. Because they brought it from home or something, somebody at the home had and they brought it to school. Well, we wanna make sure our kindergarten teachers know that that is what they look like because some of them seriously don't, you don't realize that's what they are. He talked today about some of them are, they're sweaters that actually have them in, um, you know, drawstrings. And so he's going to share that all over and then give time for question and answers.
Yeah, it's, it's heartbreaking, some of it today.
And then he'll do question and answers with our staff. After that, um, there's a selected staff, um, our facts teachers, our high education teachers, our counselors and administrators, uh, Jeff, Lee, a few of us are gonna stay because he's going to share with us and kind of roll up this free curriculum that we could use at our school. Notice we're free. And he said that it's awesome. And so we're, we're gonna give our staff some exposure to that and see if that's something that we, you know, when we do our health standards, wherever we do them, um, that we maybe wanna throw some of that, that in there. Um, I think he said it's a seven day.
I think so.
Seven days it takes to, to build a curriculum. And then I'm really excited on the twenty-second, so the next day, um, he's going to talk to our high school student council or NHS at one thirty. Um, and Glenn in here, and then he's gonna come over and talk to our middle school student council at two thirty. Really what that's gonna be doing is empowering them, um, educating them, but also teaching them what are the things that they can do to be leaders against this movement, anti, uh, movement against anti-baking. Um, you know, you see where, you know, all school kids are doing, or this is the thing to do, what are some of the things, what are some words, what are some materials that they can use to help us promote within our schools? Uh, so the kids feel that they can say no and they should say no and give them some, um, tools, give them some power back about this. Um, so that, that'll be awesome to have that. And then February fourth, he's coming to the DGF High School Theater here in Glennon, and it's a parent guardian only presentation. Um, it'll be probably about half hour, forty-five minutes, so not a lot of time out of people's night. But again, it'll be that show and tell, kind of the same presentation that he gives to our, all of our staff, but a little bit more parent guardian oriented. And we are working with the high school National Honor Society Student Council to offer, um, daycare during that. Um, where either the kids will be able to go work or toss around a couple things, maybe having, uh, the Glennon, um, Felton Elementary Gym and, um, Commons Area, some crafts, some, you know, sport things going on in the, in the gym so that hopefully we advertise that to some of those people that feel like, gosh, you really, they were gone all day, they don't really want to do this because of daycare and we don't, uh, isn't really focused on, on students, this audience. And so we're, we're going to work with, um, them on offering that. They need service hours. They love being with little kids and it'll solve, you know, hopefully gets more people there. We really wanna advertise this. We, um, we've talked about the multiple ways we're going to do it, you know, the normal things we do through the phones and emails, websites, um, flyers, have handles at games, at wrestling matches, just really try to get the word out there, um, to people. Cause we at the school are seeing, I would, well, he calls it epidemic. I would agree. It's very, it's, it's very time-consuming. Um, it's very, uh, sad to see some of these decisions are making because those kids do not know what's in there. They think that it's just a scoop juice, it's nicotine, it could be cocaine, heroin, it could be a bunch of different things that they don't even know what's, what's in there when they do this. And they, they perceive it as being, they may not bring a pack of cigarettes to school, but they'll bring a baking di- device to school. And so really educating them and, and, um, this grant that Brian's talking about, things like this would be what that person would do. And we. And we and we would target early at a young age, a ten-year-old through high school. Excited about this opportunity, sad that we have to have it, but at least we're we're offering something. Any questions about that or suggestions?
Just a random question. Um can dogs detect the scent if from these, like they can a pack of cigarettes or no? It's not as easy?
If there was something in it, maybe, but yeah.
Huh, interesting.
They, yeah, they're.
We can't detect it either, I mean, like a cigarette, you can smell it.
Yeah, and they can do it in, you know, lock locker room bathroom, whatever. We use, all days you smell a cigarette, you know, something going on there, but you can't with vaping, so.
Is it more than just nicotine? I mean, are we finding, um, I mean.
Marijuana.
Marijuana a lot.
It can be cocaine.
Cocaine. Cocaine. It can be, not that we've seen that, but anything that can be put into a liquid form, any controlled substance could be put in that, so kids could actually get exposed. That's why I asked the question earlier when he was there, have they seen fentanyl yet?
They suggested that we don't, like when I get one and he gets one, we we handle it.
It scares me.
We need to word-well, so we have to learn.
Does it emit like smoke when you exhale? I don't even know.
Just a vapor that'll.
A vapor?
Yeah, it's a vapor, but it doesn't, yeah, it doesn't.
So I suppose potentially secondhand kind of stuff, if it's not just nicotine. Okay.
It's it's very scary stuff and they don't see it as being scary, that's that's alarming.
The usage is anywhere from one out of four to one out of two high school kids.
They used to think it was more one out of four, now they're saying it's about fifty percent they believe that they know. And I've dealt with him this grade last year.
So it's gonna be really interesting, and this year we have the Minnesota Student Survey. And what is that, grades five, eight, ten and eleven?
Five, eight, nine, no, I got eleven.
Nine and eleven.
Mm-hmm.
So we'll get more info. Timing, like like I said, these are, and we really gotta, we gotta hit these things together, you know. The one is awareness on the fourth and the twenty-first with the staff and so on. Twenty-eighth is, again, where can we get long-term resources for the plan?
Right, but parents, I know you had that one meeting and it wasn't well-attended. But parents need to know, because like Amy was saying, I mean, hello, um, we're pretty naive about this. Well, if parents don't realize the importance of of this and that this this is a real genuine concern and their kids might be getting all of this, this, they're not just puffing in, you know, juice, the stuff in there. I think if parents were more aware of that.
We're working on a letter that is maybe more heartfelt. Yeah, this is really, this is happening in our schools, your child, you know, we're we're working on a letter to send home.
I was telling, talking today, I mentioned, uh, shared it a few times, but first half of the school year, I have to confiscate one pack of parents. The rest is all vaping stuff.
You know, where parents would be is at these back-to-school um athletic things, where you're having football, parents have to come and that type of stuff. I think that would be a great.
All that, that activities night?
Yep, that something is right there, cause you have a captive audience to get some information out to them.
Mr. O'Keefe talked about it at his activities meetings, that it's treated just like any other?
Right, but I'm saying if parents aren't aware of.
Oh, yeah, yeah, they have somebody that just.
Have somebody out there, just of fifteen minutes.
This is one of the big reasons of going after that drug-free community grant. Because again, as as people find out when when we do the meeting on the twenty-eighth, when you get a very active coalition together, what happens is that information then is getting shared on Sundays in the churches. You're putting that information out in all of these other, all of your, all of your different, like your Lions Clubs and all that. That's another one of those sectors. So when you have game nights, following the game, you have coalition meeting. And so anybody from any of those sectors, so either before the games or, you know, you have those meetings at events. You have those meetings when you have a, like, what, this Saturday, there's the Lions spaghetti or the Italian meal? You know, you pick events, big community events like that, and you plan a coalition meeting around it. So that it's the only way you truly get it ingrained, that it's not a quote "school issue." This is a, you know, the discussion today, it was a great discussion about the the attempt to try to get the tobacco sales to go to the twenty-one age. And how difficult that will be in the Cass-Clay area. Now, what Otter Tail did it. You have to be twenty-one to buy tobacco products. Because they, there's proven, there's statistics about if they can get that separation years. Cause it's the kids right out of high school that then are supplying the kids in high school with it.
Or they're eighteen in high school.
Or they're eighteen in high school. And this way, if it goes to twenty-one, then it's less likely that those college kids, once they hit twenty, twenty-one, are hanging out still with those high school kids. So they see that type of separation. Now, in the FM area, which is so dictated by college age and all colleges, it's probably gonna be a difficult thing unless you can get it to be an FM type of coalition, both Cass and Clay. Uh so again, big, big things, but it's a great topic, uh it's it's an absolute high need. And we're gonna just keep, keep hammering on it, cause this is part of the district goal.
Okay, well, we'll be discussing more of that.
There's these sessions on the.
Yeah, I'm sure we will. All right, we will move on to nine point one, approval of the December seventeenth meeting. Looking for a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Rowley, is there a second? All second? Any questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign? Moving on to ten, this is the Declaration of Associations for Possible Conflicts of Interest. Let's say you have somebody that works, you have a spouse that works for Comstock, you have somebody that works with um like our law firm, anything like that, it just needs to be disclosed of at this time. Anybody have?
Nope.
Nope, all right. All right, we will move on to the eleven point one, this is the election um of the vice chair.
I want to nominate Lindsey, Lindsey. And I would second that.
Second?
Oh, she already did.
She did, sorry. Louder, louder!
I second that. Any other nominations?
Who got the second?
Uh, I second it, Lynn, for Lindsey. Any other nominations? All those in favor for Lindsey as vice chair, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Eleven point two, the clerk, I make a motion for Amy Johnson to continue her position as clerk.
I second.
Nobody wants to take the note still.
You do a great job.
I don't mind.
Any one, any other nomination? Any other nomination for clerk? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign? Uh looking at the eleven point two, this is the treasurer's position. Again, I would like to make a motion for eleven point three, make a motion for Rowley to continue on that position. Is there a second? Rowley?
Ronnie.
For Ronnie? Okay. Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Hearing no other nominations, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign? Congratulations, Rowley.
Or you just need to make sure we get the signature box.
Okay.
And we all know how you have to.
Stay in the.
Cindy, make sure that we stay in the box.
Stay in the box, all right.
All days I usually have to sign fifty things or bonds or something by hand.
All right, so we're looking at, we're moving on to twelve on the consent agenda. This is twelve point one, the retirement. Do you have that one? It says retirement.
Oh, our, it's just in the.
Oh, okay, okay. All right, so we have the claims and accounts.
This time it's two hundred and seventy-two thousand, seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars and eighty-three cents.
All right, and retirement for Barb Flint and a donation from Co-Bank uh for the Day of Compassion Retreat. Looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion by Amy, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Rowley. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign? Moving on to three, thirteen point one, this is setting the twenty nineteen board compensation. Brian sent out everybody the ones of the twenty sixteen that he was able to locate. Did anybody have any um any comments, questions, concerns, any suggestions? My suggestion um was, the only thing that I saw that needed to be adjusted was the um, I think the clerk needs to be compensated at a yearly stipend of five hundred, which is a lot of, there's a lot of note-taking and and that type of stuff. So two fifty per six, six month um is what I'm thinking. And um board chair, I'm looking at a hundred dollars per month as a compensation. I've, there's so many meetings the last two years that I don't get paid for. Um and there's just a lot of stuff behind the scenes. And so that's the only thing that I can see as of needing to be adjusted at this time.
And I'd even throw in, like if a clerk, you throw fifty bucks a month, so like six hundred, so that you get a monthly amount.
Oh, okay.
Because again, you got two meetings every month, you got those minutes, you got all that stuff. And, you know, unless somebody's been a board chair, um and I have a definite tendency to be taking.
I'm your sounding block.
Yeah, I I mean, I'm I'm taking a lot of lunches, you know, because I'm.
So that's the diet plan you have, Sandy.
And.
You know, Herbert's and Herbert's.
You guys know who really follows you made to the board chair and everybody else is made to the board chair, so. Um I would throw fifty, fifteen hundred, mark three to those, you know, fifty for the clerk to get to six hundred and a hundred bucks a month on the chair. Cause I mean, it is, when you think about a hundred bucks a month for all of, if anybody doesn't think that you've got four, five, six, seven, without even any complaints and what else not, you've got those type of hours. And we know how it can be many more hours than that, so.
So nobody else does the clerk do know other than Amy, correct?
Correct.
I mean, there were a few years her career, we hired her, had.
Right, like with Carleen.
Yeah.
Nope, it's Amy.
Brian, when's the last time that it's been adjusted?
Well, I'm trying to think, I was talking to Ronnie and I said, I think fourteen years ago when I started on the board, we had forty dollars a meeting and now fourteen years later, we're making fifty dollars a meeting. So I don't think we've received a three percent increase in fourteen years.
Actually, no, our little township out there, we get sixty dollars a meeting, we don't have very many meetings, but of course, years ago, I always argued with Dave, I wanted to repay the mileage of somebody, so it's fair for me to drive all the way from there to Dilworth and somebody in Dilworth doesn't. As far as I was told, it was illegal to pay mileage for board members for regular meetings.
You should be putting it outside.
I thought they did put down my own. We never have for a year or seven, we used to, years ago, in in the Felton, in the first year.
Well, we can, we can check in and after, cause I, I, I've never.
Yeah, we've never.
Other place I've done with.
Never done that.
It's not so bad now, if you're gonna hold all the meetings in Glendon, everybody's kinda central that way, you know, but before that, you had three or four people from Dilworth, they'd go two blocks to the meeting and I had to drive eighteen miles each way, you know, and I said, I'd rather take less money and get paid mileage and I don't have to at least pay income tax on it, but.
And we can, we can check on that too, cause I think that, I mean, we're, we're talking about a nineteen million dollar budget and you think about the things that you make decisions on, on a nineteen million dollar budget and the total cost for your time is so miniscule on this, as far as the cost for doing this for compensating events. These are not big dollar tickets. I think it's, it's well within the scheme when you look at, and we don't have any new regional numbers yet. I wish we did, but I know that we've had discussions in Supes and I know there's been quite a bit of adjustments because the pressure from the public on these positions is just getting more and more. So if you're worried about public perception on giving yourself a little bit of raise when if they haven't been done in fourteen years, I don't think I'd get worried about it. There.
The treasurer's salary then, or.
The treasurers would stay at the.
That's okay, if Rowley thinks that's.
Yeah, she does all the work.
She colors, she circles well too.
And she circles really well, it's changing colors on me, which is okay.
Your lunch problem.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, like a regular meeting, we could even bump up to sixty dollars instead of fifty dollars, help cover taxes a little bit. Okay, um can I make a motion? I'm gonna be making a motion that a regular meeting rate will be increased to sixty dollars. Special meetings committee at the sixty as well. Clerk would be the fifty dollars per month. And chair, a hundred dollars a month. Does that make sense to everyone?
I'd second it.
Okay. Any questions? Will, the daily rate will be kept at one-ten, correct?
Might as well.
Okay. So all those in favor say, pardon? You have any questions?
I'd raise, I mean, even one-twenty?
One-twenty? Or one-twenty-five?
One-twenty.
You guys, what are your thoughts?
That's for our retreat days and stuff?
That's two meetings worth.
Yeah.
And you're taking.
Yeah, one-twenty.
A full day off from work. I mean, we pay our subs a hundred and fifteen dollars for six and a half hours of work during the day.
So my motion is on the floor. At sixty dollars and a hundred and twenty for a daily rate, increasing the chair and the clerk. And there's already a second on the table. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Moving on to uh setting the board meetings. The big thing was um having the meetings at this location, instead of going between locations, because we have the equipment here. We always have people and the Dilworth location is very uh awkward. Squishy, I'm a preschool teacher, squishy-squashy, it just doesn't make any sense. So keeping them all at this location, except one meeting in near Felton Field Days would still be in Felton, correct?
I'm gonna put that on, because otherwise you're gonna have people saying, well, why don't you have women in Dilworth?
Oh, true.
I mean, this way it's just, we're all women.
Pardon?
Are you comfortable with that being from Felton? I mean, we're all in Dilworth.
I wanna, we're all trying to change the times on some of them, at least the summer months.
So we're gonna be here?
Here.
We are going to be here.
Like what time are you thinking, Ronnie, in in the summer?
Why don't we delay them at least an hour if we can or whatever, I mean, any time from spring's work through fall's hours, really it's tough to come that early, but.
To come at six?
Uh?
No, come at five.
Oh, committee meeting, sorry.
Committee at six and board meetings at seven. You know, like maybe May through October or middle of April through middle of October, some number, I don't know. I don't know what the rest of you think, so is that an issue or not?
Well, you know, it gets, it gets hard in September because of activities for.
Really hard in September, once the school year starts.
But I'm thinking um May through end of August, I would be comfortable with switching that time. But then when school starts, it's just too hard with activities. I mean, I'm just like, looking at my watch now, we need to be finishing because the girls' basketball starts here in twenty minutes and Grace dances and so.
You must have looked with the days where we run till ten, eleven o'clock at night.
Oh, we, I've been at, I've been at negotiations till midnight. Oh, I've been at negotiations till midnight that one time. That was.
Can we address that once we know what committees were on? All that stuff like that?
You can come back on this one.
Yeah, because it is baseball season in May, I understand.
Location and dates.
Okay, so we're going to keep, at 13.2, I'm looking for a motion just for putting all of the meetings at this location. Again.
Not the times for now?
Not the times for now. We will come back to that one once committee meetings.
Yeah, because on the 28th, you'll know who's all gonna be on those committees and who it's gonna affect.
Okay. So I'm looking for a motion for that.
So moved.
Motion by Raleigh. Is there a second? Looking by Laura. Any further comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. In your board packet, there is a certified seniority list. Any questions on that, guys? The teachers look over this quite a bit to make sure that they are where they need to be on there. So.
Any changes from the first one or?
Uh, no, no. We did some updating on some of the licenses that were showing up in 2018. They've updated those to make sure that we don't have any of them showing up to the public, like we don't have someone licensed right now teaching. So those have all been checked. So all of those are updated. And for those of you who have not been on the Board before, when you look at the seniority list, just so that you know how it works, you get seniority, you go from probationary to seniority. Once you have served three years in any Minnesota school district, consecutive years in a district, and upon your fourth contract, you move over from probationary to seniority, continuing contract. If you've been three years at a different school district and so that you've now obtained three consecutive years, upon the end of your first year at another school district, getting offered a contract for year two, you also have seniority. So when you look at the continuing contract ones, you'll notice there's some people that came here in 2018 or in 2017 and they're already on the seniority. And you're like, well, how happened? They didn't serve three years. They served three years someplace else in Minnesota, in a public school system. So each year when the Board takes care of this, when it's brought forward, there's two listings. One that, of people that have served here three years and getting offered their fourth. And another set of lists of people that have served three years someplace else and in the first year, DGF get into seniority. So that's on the continuing contract process. No, shut up.
Okay. So I'm looking for a motion to approve the second reading of the seniority list.
So moved.
Motion by Amy. Is there a second?
Second.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. And don't, don't ever hesitate to ask questions when stuff like that comes up. It's the only way you're gonna.
Just knowing you may get a longer answer than you want.
Yes. Depends on who you ask. Okay.
I have 15 minutes in the board, but the admin team has turned it into two hours.
After the meeting works pretty good.
13.4, lane changes. Again, this is the same type of a thing. This is their, they go for more schooling and that bumps them up where they are on the ladder. So.
I mean, can I just admit your lane changes now?
Yep.
Looking for a motion to approve the lane changes as presented.
So moved.
Motion by Ronnie. Is there a second?
Second.
By Raleigh. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign. Moving on to 13.5, a non-certified contract for Sarah Rads. Rads. Her professional 1533 an hour effective January 7th. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by David. Is there a second? I will second that. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, same sign.
This is to replace Barbara. We're.
Um, it's another one. We still have one more we have to do. We are revolving your.
And who, how was it decided on their wage?
Um, great question. So what happens is for every two years of experience that they've had someplace else, they get one year on steps. They get the steps the same way. And the reason we do a two-for-one is when we consolidated all of our steps and created a new compensation package, people who had been here for 12 years just got credit for six years because we increased the wage so much into that age gap. So the agreement was if they all were to be paid the same way, it would be a two-for-one.
When did that kill us, David?
Probably at least four years ago. Four or six years ago. It didn't, I think it was four years ago maybe, as far as the non-certified, because it was a major, a major increase in compensation.
Steps are in labor contract right?
Yep.
You and him so that's a negotiation.
Yeah, it's all a fact, part of it.
Okay, then moving on to 14.1, next School Board Meeting.
And the only suggestion I have, 5:00. Remember, because we didn't have that done, we would have all the admin team coming in at 5:00. And I'll shoot you a meeting invite for that. At 5:00, we'll have the whole admin cabinet and they can talk about what they are doing as they're growing up and all those fun things. And the other thing I wanted to give you handouts, before you get out of here, two pages for each person. What you're getting now is both last year's committees and then the new committees, the blank. So you can see who's been serving before. And what I did, we changed this a little bit. So when you look at the new one for 2019, just so that the public can see that there's a big time difference with some of these. If you look and compare the two of them, we had all those committees under one listing. The problem is, the public didn't know whether, is this a board-only committee? Is this a district committee with other people? So I've changed the format. So you look at the top, there's all seven of the board members. The next part are school board only memberships. So the second group is all of your committee meetings. The next group down are regional and statewide ones that we need representation from the school board on. And the last part are all of our district-wide committees that we need somebody serving on. But then at least people know which things are under open meeting laws and which are not. Because the last ones, both of those, the third and the fourth ones, those are not open meeting laws because they're not DGF meetings, school board meetings. Okay? That's why I wanted to get this thing reorganized.
And we're gonna discuss this down in the cities. Is that what you usually do?
All right, so the meeting on Monday, January 28th will be at 5:00 PM. Any other comments, questions? Okay. During the meeting, 7:18.